Okay, got it. Are we good? Excuse me. I'm called to call to order the Eldorado City Commission meeting for August 20th, 2018. First thing we will do is have roll call.
Mayor Hayes?
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Badway?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Pause.
Alright. Next, we have invocation. Is there Reverend Mickey McCorkle?
Let's pray.
Thank you.
Holy and wonderful God, we thank you so much for the rains that we have had that replenishes our water source and that nourishes the earth. We thank you for the opportunity we have as a city council to help Eldorado continue to be a wonderful place to live and a place to invite new people to join. As the meeting happens tonight, may your presence be in all the conversations and all the decisions made so that your will may be done. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Fledge of Allegiance, please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to personal appearances. Tabitha, you're going to talk to us about Frontier.
I am. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Tabitha Sharp. I am the Holly Frontier Western Celebration. They're showing that thing, so I don't have to be up there. I'm the Holly Frontier Western Celebration Chair this year, and we, and I just wanted to come and invite you all to the celebration this weekend. It begins on Thursday, the 23rd. Gates will open at 5:30. We will do the Raint Rodeo that evening, so this year we have 12 teams competing. That's a couple more than normal, so that it'll be a full night, but they will compete in their various events that they do every year. Friday, we will open again at 5:30. The mutton busting will take place at 7:00, Bull Ride at 8:00, and Big Fat Fun will be in concert at 10:00. On Saturday, we have a full day. We start at 9:00 AM with the parade downtown. We have over 40 entries this year, so it is going to be a little bit of a parade. Brad is going to be super excited. 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we have lots of events going on down at East Park. We have a craft fair. The admission is free to the craft fair. There are 15 vendors, I think, last time I checked. We have a cornhole tournament. Still taking registrations for that, so if anybody's interested, give us a call or just come by that day and we will get you in. The kids' corral, there'll be lots of free games, a bouncy house, face painting, a petting zoo, and a tractor pull. There'll also be an ice cream social at noon, so that will all be happening down at East Park that day. Saturday evening, the gates at the Civic Center open at 5:30. Mutton busting at 7:00 PM, Bull Ride at 8:00, and Tim Dugger will be in concert at 10:00 PM. Sunday morning, we will finish up with Cowboy Church at the Civic Center at 9:00 AM, and a trail ride at Lake Boulder Bluff Number 2 at 10:00 AM. And anyone that wants to participate in that, bring your own horse, please, but we will provide lunch for them as well. So you have two passes on the dice, so we would welcome you to join us and hope to see everybody there.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The parade, how far west does it go in Central?
To Taylor.
Okay.
And the parade map is available at www.frontierwesterncelebration.com and also on Facebook.
That's why I missed it. Oh, you said a tractor pull. Is that like a pedal tractor pull?
A kiddie tractor pull, and I do believe they have pedals. I missed it last year. I was volunteering in another area, so I didn't get to see it, but I believe they have pedals. All the pictures I've seen have pedals.
Okay.
But that'll be kind of close to the Oil Museum, I think.
Okay.
The Oil Museum will also be open that day, and they'll be having free tours that day.
What's the, what's the age group for the tractor pull? Any idea?
You would ask me that, and I don't remember the answer.
These aren't questions I can, I was told to ask these questions by my daughter.
Okay. If it's not on our Facebook page under the technical event, later when I look, I will call you tomorrow, and I will also post it on our Facebook page.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Which, how many annual, how many years have we been doing this now?
This is our 12th year.
12th year, that's wrong.
12th year, and I believe eighth or ninth year for the Miss Frontier Page, and that was yesterday. Miss Bailey Smith is our new Miss Frontier.
Bailey Smith.
Yes, and Grace, and her last name is going to escape me, is our Miss Eldorado.
Did you, did you come up with that logo?
A friend of mine did, actually, yes.
Sure looks like Texas Long Woman's logo to me.
My friend that made it might be from Texas, but the Holly Frontier brand is in the middle of your list, so. And it was voted on by committee, so it wasn't just me.
Committee of one.
No.
She had the veto. Texas Long Woman.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
That was our time for public comment. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on from public comment to the consent agenda. I think agendas were sent out earlier this week, late last week, actually. Today's Monday. Consent agenda. We don't have minutes in this agenda, just the one item in there, right?
Yeah, I made a little mistake in my minutes, so I did not want to attach them yet, and
Sure.
So we went a little light this time.
So the only thing on our consent agenda would be the appointment of Greg Lewis to the K-254 Corridor Association. I would entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. No old business will move to new business. Item 10 on our agenda would be the Elks Lodge sales tax allocation. It's something that we talked about at our work session Wednesday. Any thing new you'd like to add to this?
As far as I'm aware, presently, staff continues to work with the Elks Lodge to find a solution to the interpretation issue we talked about last week. Nonetheless, the commission had asked for, asked a motion to be placed on the agenda to extend their deadline six months, so we have included that in your packet. Just for some background for the general public, the excess sales tax had recommended the commission had appropriated $30,000 in 2015 and then $25,000 in 2016 for, or to the Elks Lodge for use to purchase and renovate a building downtown, the former Elks Lodge building. So for a total of $55,000, and a couple of months ago, the commission had asked for an update on the status of that project, with the understanding that the commission, at that time, the desire was to have the building acquired sometime around August, and so the Elks Lodge came and made a presentation. They're close to getting the building acquired. There was some, some discussion on some regulatory requirements for sprinkler system, and so once we get that ironed out, they'll be prepared to move forward. So staff has provided you with the, with the extension action that you all have requested, and that will grant them a six-month extension contingent on the conditions listed for March 2018.
Okay. Any further question or comment? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant six-month extension to the Elks Lodge contingent on the conditions listed in, listed in March of 2018. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next on our agenda would be project number 538 sidewalks on the 100 block of West Olive.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, the property owner at 323 South Main has petitioned the city for replacement of sidewalk and curb of gutter chasing to his property along the 100 block of West Olive Avenue. Tonight, you have a petition before you. We're asking you to consider a resolution authorizing the improvements. This project will be funded with a benefit district, an improvement district. He is the sole entity within that improvement district and will be able to make payments as a special assessment over 10 years at zero interest.
Okay. It's the only property affected, so the only, the only assessment spread, right?
There is some city at large costs we pick up for part of the removal and replacement of curb and gutter and sidewalk that's already existing, so the city's portion of that will be taken out of the sales tax for the curb and gutter.
What is the, what's the purpose of this? What is it?
It's in, it's in very, very bad condition.
Okay, buckled and?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it, is it going to go back in its current configuration, or is there some consideration to how that, that sidewalk and parking and gutter situation is?
It's going to have to be a tall curb because of the access off the street to one of the doors. There is areas where I'd like to drop it down to a regular six-inch curb, so if y'all aren't aware, it's a pretty tall existing curb today.
Yeah.
I imagine at one point years ago, they widened the road and the building was already built, and elevations didn't quite match up.
Is that still a brick street also?
Yeah. So part of this as well will be removing some concrete pavement along the edge of the road to replace it. But talking to the property owner, he's making improvements to the building. Very, very enthused about getting this done, so are we as staff?
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good thing. It's a great thing that you come in and do this. This is-
And not have us have to force it, or you all have to force an improvement.
Right. That's great. Okay.
Number, please.
2863.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I move that resolution number 2863, a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Eldorado, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, sidewalk improvements, project number 538.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item on our agenda would be the Eldorado Inc. MOU and work plan. Again, it's something that we spent a couple of work sessions, we're talking about and working on. Anything you'd like to share, different information that we've been talking about before?
Mayor and City Commission, the memorandum of understanding, which is the first action that we are asking you to take, is the memorandum of understanding with Eldorado Inc. Primary thing here is that it identifies and defines the scope of services, which include business recruitment, assisting with preparation of development proposals, which would be proposals that we receive, economic development proposals that we receive, either directed from companies from the states or indirectly, as the case may be. We prepare these proposals when companies want information on sites, prospective sites that we may have, that they may be interested in. In addition to that, marketing, which is marketing not only to potential corporate residents, but also to targeted industries and other folks that may be interested in moving a business to Eldorado or moving to Eldorado, and then continuing to developing, developing existing business relations, which includes a wide variety of things, identifying and pursuing potential linkages with other businesses, meeting with businesses to determine their workforce needs, their current labor requirements, different things like that, or also dialing with them to determine ways that we can help them, either at the federal level, state level, or local level, with regulations, grants, loans, et cetera. So that's a pretty important thing that needs to be done. Some other things that's included in here, it breaks out and defines the revenues that are supplied to Inc. as a result of this contract. So the first piece is $68,500, which goes to Inc. as compensation for economic development services rendered under the MOU, and then the remainder of the contract, which is $34,250, is, I'm sorry, that's not correct. It's the next section here, actually. And then the additional amount comes from the industrial mill levy fund. The city actually levies up to 1 mil, or approximately $86,000 for their current valuation, and that is a match on their membership. So when they go out and recruit new members or increase their membership dues, the city has agreed to match that up to 1 mil. And so the industrial mill levy portion of the contract with the MOU stipulates that that portion will be allocated to the membership match as defined by the, as defined by the MOU. The agreement has no term. It goes until it's effectively terminated by both, by both parties, or one party, as the case may be, and that's pretty much it. The contract, because it doesn't have a deadline or termination date, rather, there's two important things here. It does not obligate future city commissions to the dollar amounts provided here, meaning that each year, as part of the budget process, the city commission has to appropriate dollars to fund the MOU. In the event that those funds are not appropriated, the agreement will be discontinued, and however, the city would have to provide Inc. with notice prior to, or before October 1st of that year. So with that, I'll take any questions on the MOU specifically.
So there's really nothing different than what we talked about in the session.
Okay, if there aren't any questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to direct, direct the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with Eldorado Inc. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Work plan is the next thing to be, to act on. I think it's a part of this package.
Mr. Mayor, I move to direct the city manager to sign the work plan provided by Eldorado Inc. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five to zero. Thank you. Tax abatement and IRB policy. This is a change, again, something we talked about Wednesday at our work session, but a change in, in some policy for IRBs. David, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, I can definitely do that. So the proposed tax abatement slash industrial revenue bond policy for you does a couple of things. The major thing is it will establish a base tax abatement of 50%, and then in addition to that 50%, industries can get increments in addition to that based upon criteria that's outlined in the, in the policy. Such criteria includes being included in one of the targeted industries, which receives an additional 25% abatement. Those include water-intensive businesses, agro-business and agriculture manufacturing, industrial products manufacturing, transportation, distribution, and wholesale, health services, food and beverage processing, aerospace, advanced manufacturing, alternative energy, bioscience, food processing, logistics, and distribution. Oil and gas has been added to the list, and office development. It should be noted that most of these industry, industries, targeted industries are aligned with what the state of Kansas has defined as their targeted industries. The only one that's truly a local targeted industry for now is water-intensive businesses, as we try to market water for economic purposes from the lake. And then some of this has also been identified as targeted industries for a region as well, so aligning our policy with not only the region and state, but to some extent, to some local priorities as well. In addition to that, development can also get an additional 5% for locating in targeted areas that include downtown, the business park, and the industrial park, and I believe that based upon top, or some conversation, no, that one is state at 5%. The targeted industries is 25%, targeted areas is still 5%, but we did increase the base capital investment from, there was two categories, if you recall, less than or equal to $15 million, got 50% base, and above $15 million, we increased that to 65% for 10 years. That's to offset the, that way, a tax abatement doesn't exceed 100%. And again, part of the, part of the abatement philosophy is that we, we don't want to give 100% abatements. We want to reserve a portion of that for dollars that will need to be used potentially for infrastructure investments that will likely be needed in the event that we are selecting for a major development. The policy allows the city to define businesses or target or industries to exclude. Presently, we are not excluding any businesses, but the city could have a conversation about businesses that wishes to exclude potentially, and name those in the policy. In addition, it places a priority on preserving the existing tax base. There are some exceptions to this, most notably the opportunity zone area that's been designated by the state government through the federal tax bill that was recently passed at the end of 2017, and then there is also a carve-out for additional federal or state special investment areas that may be designated at subsequent future, future years. And then we've also included a provision there for speculative construction would be eligible for tax abatements and IRBs pursuant to the city's speculative construction policy. We do have to develop that policy, but this way, we develop the policy right back before you all, but we don't necessarily amend this policy. It's already incorporated in there. The policy will amend the fee that we do charge from $250 to $2,500. In addition to that, there is an origination fee that is charged based upon the amount of issuance, and those dollars are collected and put into a special fund for future economic development purposes. And that is basically all of the major modifications to the application policy, so I'll stand by any questions that you may have.
You said oil and gas was included?
Yes, I added oil and gas after the study session, right, rather, for two reasons. It was mentioned during the study session, and two, it wasn't oversigned on my part. It was supposed to be included in the original proposal.
So you didn't call it oil and gas. What did you call it?
I actually did call it oil and gas. It is, it precedes or proceeds food and beverage processing in Section C of Page 2.
Section C.
H.C. Oil and Gas.
Okay, so it's not on the?
It's not in the memo.
In the memo that you-
Yeah, it's in the policy.
That's why I wondered why I couldn't find it.
I didn't make any changes to the memo, but I did make sure it was in the policy.
Okay.
Good catch.
Agreed.
And the other thing that I would note is that there is a catch on that the city commission always has the ability to waive any and all requirements in the event that there is a development that is too lucrative, or there is a need that is unperceived by these policies, the city commission can waive all, in whole or part, the requirements and grant an abatement that exceeds these numbers, except for 100%.
Yeah. And just, just to reiterate, this is a policy that really wasn't written before this? Is the, is that correct?
I mean, it was written, it just wasn't as clearly defined as it is.
And it also, I think, previous policy allowed 100%. Well, this lets us target an 80% with the ability to go to 100 if this-
Go to 95. Didn't it? Never go to 100.
Didn't never go to 100?
95.
Not explicitly, but it gave the commission key.
We got the, we got the ability to-
If you follow this, I think 95.
95. 95. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say, good job to you and staff for coming up with this. I think this is a good document, and we needed it.
Yeah, I think it's a way to stay competitive, yet also not give away the farm each time. Alright, I'd entertain a motion.
Number, please.
2864.
I move to approve resolution number 2864, a resolution establishing an IRB tax abatement policy, and to repeal resolution number 2475 and any other resolution in conflict here with.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five, zero. Thank you. Moving on, we have reports from the city commission and advisory board updates.
I have nothing. Well, I have a lot. I just don't have anything I should report.
I don't have any advisory board report, but I've noticed I'm out a lot during the day, and with all the rain we've had and all the mowing we've had, I've just noticed a lot of folks blowing their grass out into the street. And then with all the rain we've had, and it goes right down into those storm drains, and it seemed to me like these last two or three events we've had, that our storm drains have, have really done better. I don't see as much water standing in the streets, but I just feel like it might be a little better even yet if folks had swept their curbs after they finished mowing, so that's all.
Greg, you have anything?
I don't have anything to report from our, from Eldorado Inc., but I do have one question. On the entrance to Eldorado, on your Exhibit B, where the holiday incense, where the water sits out in the front, is that land owned by the city? Where the, where the old water line break used to be, where it sprayed water up in the air?
That was a fountain.
Right.
That, that is owned by the city. It is a reserve of the business park.
Is there any way we could clean that up there and make it look better on the entrance?
That area is a designated wetland.
Oh, is it?
So when the business park was constructed, an existent, like an existing wetland had to be relocated.
Oh, okay.
So the city had to construct that, and there's multi-levels of the pond there with specific plantings around its border. A couple of years ago, we did get some of the MA labor to go and do a pretty massive cleanup project as Days Inn and Holiday Inn, it gotten pretty overgrown. But there are, we are kind of, our hands are tied a little bit about what we can do throughout that area.
Is there anything you guys could do to make the water move in there to get the green look out of there?
It's part of being a wetland.
Yeah.
It's part of being a wetland. Oh, but guess the question I...
Do you care to use the sprinkler system anymore, or the fountain in there anymore?
Well, it, it, it is, it has not worked ever since it was, someone decided they wanted the copper out of it and remove it, and, and I don't think we've tried to replace it just because of the basic expense, because it was pretty well trashed by whoever decided they wanted it more.
Okay.
So I, I noticed the same thing, Greg, but the question that I would have, I certainly understand the background and why it's a wetlands and, and replacing work that was a little other place. Is, it's, it has grown kind of unsightly at our front door. Is there a way to, to construct a wetlands or identify some wetlands at our wastewater treatment plant and take that one to trade, wetlands for wetlands, and then turn that into something that we can clean up and deal with?
Potentially. I can tell you the, I, I haven't talked to the new staff of Corps of Engineers, but prior staff, that was one of their crowning achievement projects they liked to showcase, having that local presence in El Dorado with their office out at the lake. There's a lot of invasive type trees and woody stuff that's grown up in the native grass buffer that, that probably does need to be trimmed up again, no doubt. Yeah, I think we could take a look at it and see if there's something we can do.
I think it'd be worth, I mean, it is moss grown and it's kind of unsightly. I, that's, Greg, I noticed this the other day driving it too, thinking, man, this is...
The tough thing with it is, you know, with all the weirs that are constructed, it's only going to hold so much water. It's...
Right.
Is there any sign out there that says that this is wetlands?
Yeah.
Do you think for the...
This would look a lot better if it, what, we didn't have to keep it a wetlands?
Well, I guess, I, I don't mind the wetland designation.
Call your congressman.
But what concerns me is the lack of water movement. I mean, it just looks stagnant.
It's drainage.
Because it is stagnant.
Because it is.
And if you could get some movement.
Well, yeah, potentially, let's add, you know, I'll be happy to ask about the, the fountain again. At one time tied into that fountain circuit as well was lights underneath the, the fall there. See what we can get going.
Okay. Greg, thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Maybe we could pipe it out of PVC this time instead of copper, so they won't steal it.
So I'd like to go back to these exhibits, because I'm, it, it brought up a question in my head. The, the area that we are having engineers look at, where is that on this map?
It is west of the Turnpike.
Okay, so those two sections right there?
Correct.
Okay. The, the big section up to the north that runs along, is that city land?
That is Grizzly, Grizzly Development.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we've been working with those folks on trying to help them. They're interested in developing that property.
Okay. And the last, my last question is, is I know BG is going in with their, their new facility back there on that corner. Are we, are we losing that gravel gradual turn and taking that down to a ninety or anything right there?
Yes.
Okay, so all that's, so that's all going to change real soon.
The alignment of the intersection of Rocky Road and Haberhill Road is going to change.
Okay. Okay. That's all I got. Just, and I, I missed the, you know, full disclosure, I missed the CBB meeting due to an appointment for work, and then I was late last Wednesday to Parks and Rec because we were eating here. But the report that me and Tab both got, because we went at the same time, was, there was a few points made at the end of the day at the end of the meeting, but nothing really substance in the other rest of it, so I think they're gearing up. Are we gearing up to start talking to them again about Park's master plan meeting or committee?
Yes.
Okay, so I think I'm probably gearing up for that.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Good. Thank you. I've got, I guess, El Dorado Inc. met last Thursday, and a couple of things I'll report out of that. BG's groundbreaking is this Thursday at, on the twenty-third at four P M. for their facility. Distribution center, I'm going to meet with, there's a Realtors, from the housing group, housing committee, there's a Realtors meeting coming up to discuss real estate issues as well as housing, the housing market. Got an ongoing discussion. But I think one of the exciting things is, we anticipate an EDA site visit September eleventh. EDA is the Federal Economic Development Administration, which we got, El Dorado was awarded a little over a million dollars when the Barton and BG project was built sometime, some few years ago for rail spur expansion, and it's been reported that EDA is coming to look at that project and use it as a showcase of one that, where a million dollar investment turned into over sixty million dollars with a private investment. So that's, they're here to, to kind of blow the horn a little bit about that project. So they'll be in here in September. Surely we'll hear more about their visit when we get closer to it, but that's, that's been a good thing, a chance where we were able to get some federal, federal dollars directed towards public investment, which is our own local investment, which is good. That's really all I have in terms of activities lately, but we'll move on to city manager's report.
We are having a meeting in this room on September fourteenth at nine A M. to talk about downtown dumpsters and parking lot improvements, or, and or to allow the public to provide concerns they may have, or thoughts they may have, questions they may have about the downtown dumpsters and parking lots. We've had, this is in response to Main Street bring the petition to you all. Staff has kind of talked, and we do have a couple of options that we would like to, that we have, but before we move that forward, we'd like to kind of talk to the public and see what their thoughts are, their questions, more and more of their concern really, before we come out and start talking about options. So that'll be step one, and that'll be September fourteenth again at nine A M. right here in the commission chambers. The general public is invited to attend.
Okay.
Earlier in the agenda, Commissioner Lewis was appointed to serve as the K-254 Corridor Association member for the city. One thing that I would encourage folks from the general public to consider is being a member of that association. The association was recently created with the goal of advocating for and promoting kind of two things, safety along the corridor and economic development along the corridor as well. And so they're looking for charter members or founding members. That fee is two hundred fifty bucks, and those dollars will be used initially to establish the organization, organism and corporation, and a couple of other things. But then after that, really the, the initial start of the association, and then in the years in the, in the future, is going to be taking a look at the K-254 corridor plan that was done some years ago, maybe getting that updated or relooked at. But then probably more importantly for right now is getting in front of the joint transportation task force that the legislature created to look at transportation priorities throughout the state, to advocate for the needs that are along the K-254 corridor specifically, and then also demonstrating how those needs connect up to the greater Wichita area. And obviously, it's important to the city of El Dorado and numerous other local governments along the corridor, but it's also equally important for school districts, freight haulers, general business interests up and down the corridor as those movements take place from a residential standpoint, moving people, but also from a trade standpoint. And so if your business or businesses are interested in K-254 corridor as it relates to either safety and economic development, one or the other, or even both, the city would encourage you to reach out and look at that organization. Unfortunately, I don't have contact information on now, but if you are interested, please call the city at three-two-one-nine-one-hundred, and we can hook you up with that information. The association has not yet defined its next meeting, but when it does, we'll make sure to pass that along and get that word out. In addition, one thing I'd just like to remind you all of, at our next study session, we'll be talking about topics for a, an upcoming joint meeting with Inc. and the county. So you might be thinking about three different topics that you'd like to maybe have talked about at that, at that meeting. Other than that, that's all I have for a brief time here.
That joint meeting will be with the Inc. Board and, but our county commissioners all together?
Definitely.
Okay.
With that task force that we're calling that the industrial corridor, I'd like to see El Dorado talk with the Kansas Turnpike Authority and see about putting a third exit on Ohio Street. Since they're doing all the updating on, on the Kansas Turnpike, to have them do a study about putting one on Ohio Street, and that way we'll have exits all the way along two fifty-four all the way to Tuana.
The, the Turnpike has been involved in the initial meetings, and I think they're, they're looking forward to continue, so they'll have a seat at the table.
Good.
Yeah, they were present at the last meeting too, or the one that was here. Good. Not having an executive session, I move on to, next item is adjournment. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move with adjourn.
Second.
Gonna move to second, and all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.